Ms. Bennett, would you please call the roll?
I will, sir. Councilmember August. Councilmember Furman. Councilmember Denver. Deputy Mayor Edgerton. Mayor Mann.
Here.
Thank you.
And we have words of inspiration by Pastor Scott Gonnis of Good Shepherd Lutheran Church. Pastor?
Thank you. My words of inspiration is let us pray. Eternal Lord, ruler of all, graciously regard those who have been set in positions of authority among us, that guided by your spirit they may be high in purpose, wise in counsel, firm in good resolution, and unwavering in duty, that under them we may be governed quietly and peaceably through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thanks, sir. Mr. August, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
Yes, please join me in the plectalition to our flag in a special tribute to the veterans in the audience that we celebrated last week. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all. I believe we do not have any presentations this evening, so I'll be looking. Are there any modifications to the minutes of November 5th, 2014? Hearing none. Those minutes are approved. Madam Clerk, do we have any modifications to the agenda tonight?
No, sir.
Thank you very kindly. Public commenters, would you please call the first speaker?
I will, sir. Would, please, oh, thank you. Rogelio Saldana.
Hi, good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
I just wanted to come up here and do a brief reminder on an issue that's...
Could you speak into the mic so we can get it on?
I wanted to come by and remind you guys about an issue that is rather dangerous. Again, it's a blind corner when people are traveling north, south on Menifee Road as they pass New Arrowhead. There's a blind corner, and that's the exit to our neighborhood. But it's also an area where seniors take daily walks, children walk to school. We have way too many cars and trucks barreling down there about 55 miles an hour in the morning. People are in a hurry to get to where they need to go. And from what I understand, I think I spoke to Mr. Smith, the city engineer, right? Okay. And it looks like in February, there's going to be maybe a signal light, you said, or a stop sign. And I was thinking, could we perhaps have a stop sign in the interim until we decide whether it's going to be a permanent stop sign or a signal light? Because it's rather dangerous. It's a blind corner. It's really just a risk every time you exit.
Excuse me, could I ask you? I'm sorry, I didn't hear the cross street. Menifee and what?
Oh, New Arrowhead. New Arrowhead. And Menifee Road. It's right before the bridge that crosses the golf course.
Right there by Alder.
Yeah, it's a total blind corner.
On the north side? Is that on the north side?
South of Alder Gate, north of Newport.
Okay. Right, okay.
Yeah. It's a small enclave, about 50 homes. Getting out of there is a doozy every day, so. And I just wanted to appeal to you guys if you could put a stop sign in the interim until we find out whether it's going to be a signal light or keep it a stop sign. Either or. Please. Thank you.
The, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the signal is going in at Alder Gate and Menifee Road, is that correct?
That is correct.
Right, so that'll, from a traffic engineering standpoint, that would theoretically slow down some of the flow heading into New Arrowhead and Menifee Road and that one corner.
That's great, but it will never diminish the fact that it's a blind corner. And the blind corner is always a risk.
Well, are you an engineer?
No, but it doesn't take an engineer to know what a blind corner is and that it won't disappear until...
Well, I live over there, and I understand exactly what you're talking about. I deal with it every day when I drive left and I drive right out of New Arrowhead. And it's not a blind corner.
It is a blind corner if you're exiting.
It's not a blind corner. So, anyway.
I can take you there personally and show you it's a blind corner.
I'm not taking it personally. I'm just saying that from a traffic engineering standpoint, let's assess the impact of it after the light goes in and see where we're at.
It's a blind corner nonetheless.
No, it's not a blind corner. Next speaker, please.
Okay, I'll invite you.
Peter Thorworth.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Good morning. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Kathy and everyone in attendance. I would like to ask the five of you and literally everyone here to call with me for the local police to have a much more significant presence on our local roads. Everyone is in a hurry, and in Menifee, they can pretty much feel free to break all traffic laws on the roads. We all have seen it, U-turns in the middle of the road, speeding, tailgating, talking with the cellphone, all kinds of things that are against the law. And honestly, I ask each person here to ask themselves, when is the last time you saw someone pulled over? So if there is no enforcement, then we have to assume that those in a hurry are going to bend the rules, break the rules, and take all kinds of chances. When was anyone pulled over for driving at night with no headlights? We see that all the time. Or for trailers with lights that don't work? How dangerous is it to drive when your brake lights don't work? It is literally a recipe for disaster. Why is all this important? Because your lives, our lives, and the lives of everyone we care about are at stake. My wife and I ask again and again, what are the police doing that is more important than having some kind of a presence on the road? The two main intersections around here, which of course are Newport and Antelope and Newport and Hawn, as close as the police station is to there, it's doubly ironic that there seems to be very little attendance to those places where all kinds of laws are being broken again and again, and all kinds of lives are at stake because of risky driving. A more very specific example, and I appreciate City Council's help with this, is sometime back, I was bringing to your attention that at Sunstream and Antelope across from Ralph's, there was a need for a U-turn because there were just too many things at that intersection. There has been a no-U-turn sign put in. The no-U-turn sign has been knocked down twice because no one is ever enforcing that. And I can tell you, people are making U-turns there all the time. It's just a matter of time because, a matter of time before someone else gets very, very seriously injured. I can tell you, there were at least two accidents at that intersection in the last month. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Denver?
Friend, I take some responsibility for this. Head of the Safety Committee, we are hiring new police with focus on motorcycle police because those are the ones who basically handle the streets. You're going to be very surprised, in a relatively short period of time, how many more police we have to give more tickets. We're going to double our tickets in the next year. I'm sure everybody's happy about that. And then in the next year after that, we're going to double them again. And so you will see that there's going to be, that's one of the focuses of our city, is to hire more police for that very purpose. We all understand.
Mr. Edgerton?
Thank you. Even warnings would be an eye-opener and a wake-up call.
Just following up on Councilman Denver, the motorcycles are extremely affecting. You asked us, she said, when is the last time you saw somebody pull over a car? Last time I saw somebody pull over a car was 5:00 this evening on Menifee heading north at Antelope, and it was our motorcycle. He was not happy. But that's going to happen more and more often, according to the Chair of our Safety Committee.
Good, thank you very much.
Next speaker, please.
Ronald Clayton. And in front of you is a distribution he wished you to have when he spoke.
Scott, I'd like to congratulate you on your reelection. And also, I'd like to have the attention of the full committee on a matter that pertains to the Sun City Mobile Estates over on Newport and Murieta. There's a gate in the back of the community that separates the Cottonwood Estate plus from ours. And I found out last Sunday that one of my neighbor came over and told me that they're going to take the gate down. And so in order to circumvent that, I'm starting a dialogue now so that we can get further into it and find out why the development wasn't notified as to what their intention was on opening the road. All of our neighbors have been there in excess of 20 years, and it's always been closed, with the exception of fire and police. And so I don't realize the difficulty that the development is having, other than it's difficult because they haven't got the cul-de-sac in. And I understand that. So, on the next meeting on the 1st of November, I mean, December, myself and a few other people walked by to talk to everybody and give their viewpoints. Dave at the corner is not in our community, but he's affected by this gate area. So, if there's anything that I can answer at this time, I'd be happy to do that. Otherwise, I'll just let my time go to the next speaker or to the committee and let them take care of it.
Thank you, sir, for bringing this to our attention. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Our city engineer, Jonathan Smith, is actually working on the issue. It's right next to Pacific Communities, where Pacific Communities is being built. And currently, there's a gate there, I believe. Jonathan and his team are working on a cul-de-sac soft issue there that will hopefully divert the traffic and not allow them to go through. But there are some conditions on that project. We'd be happy to share that with you. If you want to come in and meet with us, that'd probably be the best way. We've got all the information in the office at City Hall, so.
I can appreciate that.
If I could have Gina get your information. Gina Gonzalez from my office. We'll set up a meeting, come on in, and we'll share with you everything that's going on.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Clayton.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please.
Red Sullivan.
Hi, good evening. I'm Carol Sullivan, known as Red. I'm speaking this tonight on Menifee-Sun City Concern to remind you that on Thanksgiving Day, as we did last year, we are going to deliver hot turkey meals to our shut-in seniors. We had 78 seniors that we served last year. They each got a hot turkey meal with all the trimmings. We are looking at 100-plus this year. We are looking for donations of food. Money's always good, but we'll take the food. And we're looking for volunteers to help to deliver the food. This was extremely well-received by our seniors last year. They were so pleased. In fact, they started calling us in the end of September to see if they were going to have their turkey meal. Abe at Boston Billy's is going to do all of the cooking, and he's not charging anything to do any of this. So, in return, I would ask that if you could go by and visit him and give him a nickel or dime to do this, because he did this last year for us at well over 78 meals. And it looks like we're going to be 100-plus this year. So, any help you can give us is, would be appreciated. In the meantime, I just want to let you know that Menifee-Sun City Concern is still alive and well and taking care of the seniors in the city of Menifee. Thank you.
And thank you for sharing that email with us announcing that and for the work that you do with that program. Next speaker, please.
Katie Manier.
Tonight, I want to address an issue. The corner of Garbonia and Antelope is a vacant lot that is zoned residential, yet it is being farmed. The plows run daily, and several nights well after dark, two plows were running, had their lights on. When they run, the visibility on Antelope is zero. There is so much dust and dirt. If we have construction, they have to keep it wet, they have to keep the dust down, and yet the farmer doesn't. I believe this is a violation anyway, since it's a residential lot. I called City Hall yesterday about it, and I was told someone would get back to me. And of course, nobody has. That's how it goes when you call City Hall. There needs to be a violation issued, as this is a nuisance. I have a family member with a compromised immune system, and I firmly believe that soil has been, the land there has been dumped with sledge, and you all know that. I've talked about it over and over for years. And it shouldn't be tilled over and over. Next, I want to address Chris Thomas and Earl Phillips. I'll plan to address them as well at the Planning Commission meeting. Last Planning Commission meeting, I spoke. Spoke with regards to an issue concerns everybody in this city. Yet they decided to say I didn't know my facts. They made it a non-issue, as Mr. Leesmeier has tried to do, a non-issue. I don't believe it is a non-issue. I have sent a letter to our city attorney asking him to clarify Penal Code 1203.4. And I would like him to do that now. My understanding is arson is a felony when it shows intent. It's a misdemeanor if it does not show intent. When I spoke, I knew the facts. I knew what I was talking about. I've looked it up and researched it. So, I think Chris Thomas and Earl Phillips owe me an apology, and I expect one at the Planning Commission meeting. I'm tired of being told I don't know what I'm talking about, and I'm a liar, and I'm making up facts, when what I say is the truth or I wouldn't say it.
The, Mr. Johnson, could we have a little bit of research, perhaps, from staff on the dry wheat farming or tilling issue? Because I know, I've lived here for a long time, several of us have lived here for a long time. A lot of the fields that are still dry wheat seem to be done at night. I don't think there's an ordinance that mandates that it be done at night, but maybe just give us some feedback on that, if it has to be...
Done at night.
Excuse me?
You're excused.
Bailiff?
Oh, no. Go there.
Bailiff? Just, if you could please look into that and give us some feedback at a future meeting, I'd appreciate it. Either by an email or maybe through Gina can give Ms. Manier some feedback as well.
I'd be happy to do that.
And city attorney, could you address the issue of the penal code with respect to what was mentioned briefly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did get Ms. Manier's correspondence, and it refers to Penal Code Section 1203.4. Section 1203.4, however, doesn't have anything to do with arson or whether there need or need not be intent in connection with an arson conviction. Rather, 1203.4 deals with the circumstances under which a prior conviction can be dismissed effectively after the fact. So, somebody can serve their time, whether it be probation or in jail. And then after they have completed that, they can go back to the court and say, I want to have the whole case dismissed. And 1203.4, in fact, allows that to happen. And knowing a little bit about the context of the question, that is, in fact, the procedure that the Councilman-elect Leesmeier went through in this circumstance.
Okay. Thank you very much for addressing that. And madam clerk, do we have additional speakers?
No, sir.
Thank you. Do we have any speakers on the consent calendar?
No, sir.
Councilmember reports on committee activities, gentlemen? Any reports from, okay, I have one report from, do you have a report from one of your regional committees?
No. No, I just have, or can I have comments later?
We're going to have comments later.
Councilman comments.
Councilman comments are, hit this section, but they're confined to your service on boards and social activities that you may have done incident to appointments. The new city attorney revised that for us. Mr. August?
We all, most of us here on the council, and some people in the audience, attended the city's Veteran Day, Veterans Celebration last week over at Wheatfield Park. Katie Capter, one of the great speakers, was there. She gave a small presentation, but her son, who had just gotten back from Afghanistan, a medic just like she was, gave a rather compelling presentation to all of us that were there in attendance. I did attend two other veterans. I went to the Caffey Church Celebration, and I attended one other one. And one thing that I noticed, and it really caught me by surprise, I hadn't noticed it before, but we have fewer and fewer veterans that stand up when they're asked to be recognized in the audience. And I imagine, Mr. Mayor, that that probably has something to do with the fact we're losing World War II, Korea, Vietnam, and the all-volunteer service. But it just, I noticed it for the first time, and I'm probably going to have to think it about it and see what it means to me. So, anyway, that's what I did.
Thank you, Mr. August. I attended RCTC, Riverside County Transportation. Okay, Mr. Edgerton?
No.
No? The mayor goes last. You're up.
No, I just wanted to follow up because we had somebody that had kind of excoriated us when we didn't show up at the Veterans Affairs. And I do show up at those affairs. I did not show up at Wheatfield Park in reference to what Greg was talking about, but I was busy that day. I was at the hospital most of the day with my wife, who's now out and great and feeling good. And I spent the rest of the day with a man who's 96-years-old. He's a Pearl Harbor survivor. His name is Bill Spear, and he's my father-in-law. He's got a nice picture up there of himself and me and the mayor that was taken quite a few years ago. So, I thought I spent my time well with a great veteran. And you're right, Greg, there's fewer and fewer of them.
Thank you, Mr. Edgerton. We thank Ensign Spear for his service on the USS Honolulu.
That's right.
Mr. Furman?
I've served on the RCA Board and the, what I call it, the Kangaroo Rat Board also. They have a goal of establishing 150,000 acres for habitat and animal protection in areas of the whole county that will never be developed. And it creates connectivity and corridors. It's like a big circle around the whole city. And during my tenure on that, I actually served my whole four years on those two boards. And I enjoyed working with the RCA and the habitat. I think during my tenure, I think we have up to 43,000 acres right now under conservation, and our goal is 150. It's a 25-year plan, and it's been in existence for 10 years. So, it's making great strides in creating habitat for our animals. That's it. I enjoyed serving.
Thank you, Mr. Furman. Mr. August?
Just real quick, and I was remiss. I wanted to thank the city for setting up the program at the college. It was Mr. Lennox. He did an outstanding job. It was your first show. And Mr. Johnson, it was a perfect selection for the day. And Mr. Yoon was wonderful as usual. So, everything went off without any kinks. So, I thank you, Mr. Lennox, for your participation.
Thank you, Mr. August. I echo those sentiments from you, Robert, on your effort and good job on your first emcee job for a significant event. Real quickly, I sit on the RCTC, Riverside County Transportation Commission. At the last meeting, a significant milestone actually happened and started. The commission unanimously approved, and it was in the paper already, the commission already unanimously approved 30 to 0, expending $2 million for an economic feasibility study to straighten out Highway 74 along the Ethan Act Corridor. And so, it makes sense when you think about the fact that the Paris Valley Lines is approved and underway construction. The I-215 Central Phase is well underway, as you know. And then through Ethan Act, through Nuevo. And then the Line A project is well underway. So, exploring the Ethan Act Corridor and straightening out 74 to provide an unimpeded route from Hemet all the way to Lake Elsinore, where 74 meets out in the Meadowbrook area, makes a lot of sense, and it's going to help unlock economic vitality for the northern part of our city. So, that's my report for tonight for my committee activity. With that being said, we have no speakers on the consent calendar. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Show move.
Is there a second? We have a second by Mr. Edgerton. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember August. Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver. Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
And we have no other items on the agenda. Do we have any city attorney report?
No, Mayor.
Do we have a city manager report?
Just two items. I'm fortunate to be appointed to the League of California City State Policy Committee for Transportation, Communication, and Public Works.
Oh, a statewide appointment.
Yes, sir.
Congrats.
Thank you. This gives Menifee a pretty big boost in southwest Riverside County, so I'll be meeting with my colleagues to get their policy opportunities for the league to consider policy changes and working with council to make sure that our needs are being met at the state level. It's a nice, it was a nice appointment, a nice surprise. Next, Robert is going to talk, Community Services Director, is going to share with you a little bit about the event that we have coming up on December 5th. And I really want to commend him as a Community Services Director in taking what was a nice little event here at City Hall with a tree lighting ceremony into a really nice, I hope, long-term event for the community that's going to be really great. So, Robert, can you share with us about the December 5th tree, Christmas tree lighting ceremony?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you, Mayor and council members. On the screen, you'll see, obviously, the event flyer, which is by now, I believe, posted in various places throughout town. And some of the changes that city manager was referencing in the past, that event has taken place here at City Hall on the tree out front. And this was an opportunity in the current year to upgrade, so to speak. We've been working diligently with community partners, which are listed at the bottom of the flyer, but also with Regent Properties on the site across the street, across Newport that's being developed right now. As you may recall, when that project was approved, there was some discussion about that being the new center of town. And we want to really highlight and start that process now before the project is even completed. So, Regent has graciously allowed the city to utilize the space and offer this program. As you see, some of the festivities include a snow play zone. There was a makeshift one here at City Hall in prior years. We're expanding upon that and encouraging families and kids to come out and use that and sled on it. There'll be some safe sled runs that folks can participate in, as well as food and craft vendors, an elves workshop where kids can come in and for free, build ornaments that they can take home with them after the event. Obviously, the tree lighting ceremony will take place as well at that evening. And that lighting is going to be a little different than it's been in the past. The intent here is actually to light up the roundabout, the Great Oak Tree at the roundabout in the middle of the town center. So, it should be quite an event, an opportunity to highlight that Great Oak symbol and brand of the city. We're really looking forward to that. And to top it all off, we will have holiday movies playing on our big outdoor movie screen off on one side of the event. And of course, live entertainment, which is a compilation of a group we're bringing in, as well as some community performances from various groups in town. So, again, we're really looking forward to this, and it's going to be a good, it's going to be a great opportunity to connect with the community.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lennox. Mr. Denver?
And Senator Claus will be there.
He will, yes. And as you see on the flyer as well, there is a side activity going on, which is the house decorating activity. And this is something that the city and Menifee 24/7 are collectively putting together. They've done this event, this activity in the past, and we've helped them produce a little bit more by having categories and then announcing winners of the competition that evening on the entertainment stage at the event. So, we're looking forward to that.
Thank you. Mr. Edgerton?
Yeah, just a little clarification. I notice under councilmember, it says councilmember reports. It doesn't say council comments anymore in it. Are you trying to put a gag order on councilmembers coming forward with some rants and some complaints about stuff that's irrelevant and material and beside the point?
Who, the mayor? No, I defer to the city attorney on that change.
All right. But I didn't know what this...
For a bit of explanation, Councilman Edgerton, and in balance to the council and the mayor, in looking at the agenda, we realized that Assembly Bill 1234, which was passed, I think, in 2009, required that an additional item be put on the city council agenda that created a forum for councilmembers, a requirement that councilmembers report out on committee activities, and frankly, any type of activity that they've taken that was funded by the city, and that's a public accountability issue. It's to make sure that you're communicating with the public about how the city's funds have been spent on you and what benefit is coming back out of that. And so, we, in looking at the agenda item, and frankly, in listening to the way that this item on the agenda had been delivered in a few meetings, we thought it was better to clarify the purpose of that line item. So, the line item hasn't changed. We've just tried to sort of rein in how that line item is used and ensure that it's used. used for the proper purpose. Because the flip side of it is, as Councilman Edgerton alluded to, is that we're really supposed to have a dialogue about items that are on the agenda. And, and so, that was the objective.
Thank you very much, Mr. Melching. And Mr. Denver?
Did I hear you say that we are really not supposed to speak on other things that we do during the last two weeks?
The Brown, you, the Brown Act allows for brief comments of councilmembers, but it, and the brief comments, of course, is a context-based evaluation that you, that you make on the fly. And certainly, when public, when public speakers come up and make comments, councilmembers are permitted to give a brief response, as are staff members. But the objective was to make sure that if it was something that merited a more lengthy discussion, that it would be properly agendized.
So, with the Brown Act in mind, we'll take it back to the agenda item at hand and thank Mr. Lennox for your presentation on the staff report and for the December 5th tree lighting ceremony. Sounds like it's going to be a great event, moving it to the Great Oak Tree and the roundabout. That's fantastic. Look forward to being there. Mr. Johnson, does that conclude your presentations?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, marvelous. Uh, do we have any councilmember future requests for future agenda items? Hearing none. We will see you at our next meeting for our reorganization meeting on December 3rd. We are adjourned.